Okay, buddy. You know, right?
It looks really good.
It's a boutique thing that he's doing. It couldn't be...
I guess we'll call it over. Please pay planning commission. June 8th, roll call for attendance.
Commissioner Perry.
Here.
Commissioner Marano.
Here.
Commissioner Burr.
Here.
Jeremiah N. Gary.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Amy, would you speak more? Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Stevens.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Before we move on, let's welcome Pat Terry to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome. Then we just have to adopt some minutes from our last meeting. Would anyone like to make a motion to adopt those minutes?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the meeting, or the minutes, for the May meeting.
Perfect, thank you, Rex.
I'd like to recuse myself because I wasn't there.
Okay.
When you guys go to...
Roll call for all in favor?
We need a second.
We need a second. I'll second if we need...
We need a second, yeah.
Yeah. I'll second that. What was the last meeting Jim Burr was absent for? I'd like to, we should note that. First absence in two decades.
It was last meeting. So, all in favor, roll call?
Commissioner Perry.
Yeah, I abstain from this since I also was not there. I did watch it on the TV thing.
Commissioner Marano.
Aye.
Jeremiah N. Gary.
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
All right, item four on our... Oh?
Abstain.
Abstain.
He abstained.
Item four on the agenda is the Empire Urban Renewal Plan. We have Elaine Howard for a PowerPoint presentation.
I'm sharing my screen. There we go. I'm going to have to go out of this and start it again. We just did this and it worked. I'm very sorry.
It's okay.
Here, it's coming.
It did, it did come up the first time. You did see PowerPoint right when you first started talking.
Oh.
Looks like it might be doing some... There it goes.
Okay, so, that is probably not in presenter mode, is it?
Uh, looks good on this end.
Is it okay? All right, thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Elaine Howard. I have been the city's urban renewal consultant for about fourteen years, I think. So, I am talking to you tonight about the potential amendment to the Empire Urban Renewal The role of the Planning Commission... Oh, do you guys hear me? I see some notes on the screen.
Oh, we can hear you. We can hear you.
Okay, sorry. The role of the Planning Commission is to review the proposed Empire Urban Renewal District Plan Amendment and make a determination on its conformance to the Kooz Bay Comprehensive Plan. The statute says that any urban renewal plan substantial amendment must be reviewed by the Planning Commission, and the statute also says the amendment must conform to the Comprehensive Plan. The statute doesn't say precisely that the Planning Commission takes that role, but as a practitioner, over the years, we have tied those two actions together because it makes the most sense for the Planning Commission to make that determination since they're in charge of the Comprehensive Plan. This is the map of the Empire Urban Renewal Area with the proposed additions. You can see the large blue arrow at the kind of middle of the screen that shows both the John Toppets Park and the Armory Site. Those are the two parcels that are proposed to be added to the urban renewal area. These are the projects that are proposed to be implemented as part of the amendment. So, continuing the very successful facade program where the agency is able to help businesses within the urban renewal area upgrade their businesses, to continue the Empire Sidewalk Project, Phases One and Two, to potentially do some further property acquisition of the old Gussies Building and the Ayers Building, to continue doing street improvements within the area and adding some funding to that street improvement amount, to do gateway improvements, to have a fund to assist with brownfield reclamation, especially for the Armory Site, to have money to do financing fees for the lending in the urban renewal program, and to continue the administration of the Urban Renewal Agency. The substantial amendment is proposing not only adding the land and projects, but increasing the maximum indebtedness of the area. To do an increase to the maximum indebtedness, we have to do a financial analysis of the plan. In that analysis, we projected a very conservative 2.5% growth scenario. In the Oregon Revised Statute 457, there is a requirement that when you do a maximum indebtedness increase at this point in your urban renewal plan, that you also require approval of 75% of the taxing districts representing the permanent rate levy amounts. The city itself is included as one of those taxing districts. So, for this amendment to be approved, the city will have to pass a resolution, and then two other taxing districts will need to also concur with this increase by passing over that resolution of concurrence. The increase proposed is increasing the maximum indebtedness from $18,890,011 to a round figure of $29 million. In an urban renewal area, the maximum indebtedness is the total amount of money that the Urban Renewal Agency may spend on projects, programs, and administration for the agency. It does not include interest paid on debt. As part of reviewing the amendment for conformance to the Comprehensive Plan, we went back through the existing plan and looked at the planned sections that already existed in the plan. Already, in the plan were sections on economy and transportation. We added two new sections to the Comprehensive Plan Section findings, recreation and open space, and public facilities and services. And the finding is the age, wear, and location of the current library in a floodplain area necessitate its replacement with a larger facility at a new location to continue as Kooz Bay's premier community cultural and recreational resource. Remediation of brownfields will improve economic development opportunities by providing sites for future development. It is anticipated that the library would go in the John Toppets Park, and that some of the site improvements, including the sidewalk and street improvements that might be required, would be paid through those projects that were identified in one of the initial slides. Again, the existing sections that are in the Empire Renewal District Plan are energy conservation, historic preservation, economic development, and transportation. Doing these projects, again, would support and not hinder any of those existing Comprehensive Plan sections. The proposed action for you to review tonight is to find that the amendment conforms to the Kooz Bay Comprehensive Plan. These are potential motions for you to consider. We provide those motions because the statute is pretty specific in the language that it uses in terms of finding conformance, and just to make sure that that language is used if you decide to make that finding, we try to assist you in making sure we make it the correct way per the statute. We can come back to that slide if anyone wants us to. The next steps after tonight is a presentation to the county, and I think we are working on that date. We send, have sent out a letter to the different taxing jurisdictions in a consult and confer process. We do need to other taxing districts to vote on the maximum indebtedness increase, and we anticipate that happening in June and July. There is a scheduled Kooz Bay City Council hearing for July 20th. It is an open public hearing with notice to residents of the city of Kooz Bay. And then the city council will vote on a non-emergency ordinance that does not go into effect for thirty days. We provided you in your packet a copy of the amendment and a copy of the report that has to go with the amendment. I can answer questions on either of those two documents or on anything on the presentation if you have any questions.
Yes, thank you.
Would you like me to stop sharing the screen, so...
What was that?
On the... Can I, can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Of course.
On the, the brown, brownfield remediation stuff, is that just solely for the, the Armory there? You were...
No, I think the intent is to allow for brownfield remediation on any site within the urban renewal area, and there's just that fund of $1 million set aside at this point for that.
And, but is that what the intent is, is the Armory Site? To... Because I saw that mentioned with the brownfields, or there was talk about that.
There is, there is hope, I believe, and I am not sure who all from staff is there, but I think there is hope that that site could be acquired by the agency and cleaned up and then put back into reuse. And if anybody on staff is there who wants to correct that, feel free to jump in.
I believe that's accurate. This is Carolyn.
I'm just concerned with taking on a, you know, a federal government military site and spending local, only local dollars on remediation for the problem that they caused to our local environment.
I, I think that's a fair comment, and I hear you, and unfortunately, I don't have an answer for that, and so we can make note of that in the minutes and let the city council know that that issue came up.
What are they supposed to have done to it?
Yeah, that's my question.
I mean, they didn't have any, they weren't doing like live armed firing or...
I think it was in the report about lead disposal.
Nerve gas testing or anything else?
It was all about the lead.
But the lead...
I believe that in the basement of the site, there was a shooting range, and so it is lead, but I, could be corrected.
I think it was lead.
That's my understanding. There was a shooting range in the basement, so whatever lead slugs or lead bullets you have there, that's your lead.
Yeah.
It wouldn't take a million bucks to have it there.
No, it doesn't seem like that much if they hit the target ray off, does it?
When was, when was the building built? The Armory?
It probably predates...
Predates 1978 when lead-based paint was all in there.
Probably, and it's also maybe fiberglass or asbestos as well.
Okay.
What, are they planning to tear the building down? I guess I'm trying to understand what we're doing here.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I couldn't tell if they were planning on taking it down.
I, I think that the whole project has not been fully developed, but I know that the Urban Renewal Agency has been able to acquire other properties, both in this district and in your downtown district, and either renovate them themselves or get them prepared to be able to put back into active use. And so, I think the hope is, is that that building can be put back into active use for your community.
I just, I just don't think that urban renewal dollars should be spent without getting a clear environmental report from the federal government. I don't think solely local dollars or even going after grant funding to do remediation projects on, on federal sites should come solely from urban renewal efforts.
Well, don't, doesn't the federal government have a responsibility to clean up before they turn it over to another entity?
Normally.
Well, I know down at, at the, you know...
Naval.
Naval base down there, they, there was, and there was lead there. They're shooting guns everywhere, I guess. But, but there was, you know, but they, before the tribe, before it was given to the tribe, they had to have certain assurances from the federal government that it was going to be taken care of. So, I, I think that is a very reasonable request.
Yeah.
And it, the, it encompasses the entire area, the map, so it may not be just this location. It could be the, the tank farm, it could be other locations. For instance, there's a service station that's right next to Gussies that's sitting there could be contaminated. So, it's just a contingency fund.
Sure. It, it just reads like it's for the proposed library site is what it looks like.
Where, where's the army gonna go?
What's that?
Where's the army gonna go? They're not there.
Is it still active? Or empty?
I don't, I...
Elaine, do you know if the building is empty? If the building's still active?
I do not believe that the building is active, but again, I am not the expert on that. And I think what you could do if you have concerns about this is, as part of your finding conformance to the Comprehensive Plan, you could advise the city council that you would like more information on the Armory Project before it is undertaken, knowing that the brownfields, as someone else indicated, money could be spent anywhere in the district to help deal with brownfield issues. So, I, I, I wish I had better answers for you about the Armory Project. I just know that in the agency meeting, there was talk about trying to put it into an active use in your community.
Any other items for discussion? Did anyone want to bring up?
Do we need to make a motion on any of this?
We're making a motion to recommend to the city council...
Elaine, could you go back to the slide that gives the options for motions?
Yeah, I think it's up.
Oh, okay. Do you have that in your packet, Rex?
Yeah. It's all about conforming to the comp plan. It's pretty broad.
And you, you could add to that motion that, you, you can make the first motion, and then you could add another comment about your, after you have passed the motion on the comp plan, you could add another comment that you wanted to make sure the city council understands your concerns and issues regarding the Armory.
Any other, of the other projects that you guys want to discuss besides the Armory?
So, where exactly is the library going? Is it in the Armory Site? I, I heard Toppets Park. Top, Toppets Park.
Yeah, Toppets Park.
It's a different site.
Different site.
It's to the west.
It, yeah, it's, it, yeah, if you look on your screen, it's directly to the west.
You're gonna move the, the city library to Toppets Park?
I thought they abandoned that silly idea.
That's, that's the idea.
That's, that's the whole point of what we're doing right now, I think, is to move dollars to, for that site, is what it looks like to me.
But, but I thought that we just had a discussion about moving the, the library out of the middle of the town where it belongs, now to the Empire District where it doesn't belong, and I thought that got pretty well settled, that was just not gonna happen.
Not true.
No.
Well, that's just nonsense.
I'm with you, Jim.
Commissioners, this is, this is Carolyn.
If I could, the, the function for the commission tonight is to determine whether or not what's proposed is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. And I think that Elaine has kind of laid out a nice option for you to share your, your concerns with the council, but I think the first order of business would be to decide whether or not you believe what's proposed is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. That's, that's kind of your overarching task for the evening.
We just, we just view rather than our random ideas about the library placement, perhaps. I get it.
I do think that it conforms, but maybe we can add our concerns at the end and ask for additional information, maybe?
Does it, does it...
I would suggest that, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna ask, I mean, it, it, I'm sure it technically conforms with the plan, but is it falling through with the spirit and the intent of the plan? That's what I don't know. To me, it looks like just shuffling things around to how does this really benefit the, the Empire District there? That, that's, you know, that's kind of my hangup. I, I feel like we're not really investing right. This just feels like it's being funneled to that proposed library site there by the Armory and not really to the core Empire Business District there where, where it should be, where, you know, we're investing all this on one-on-one and downtown here, which needs to happen and should happen and is a great thing, but I just feel like we're kind of leaving, you know, to Empire's detriment, where, where we really need as much funding as possible to be going into that kind of Empire core and help those businesses down there and support and build that up, rather than, than what feels like just moving things around to benefit the library site.
Well, if I could suggest, perhaps those concerns could be framed in the second motion, but if your first motion could deal with whether or not there's consistency with the Comprehensive Plan, that would be, that, that would kind of meet the, the intent of, of what the commission needs to address tonight, whether or not it meets, it, it is consistent with the comp plan. Elaine, is there any, is, that's...
That is, that is true. I, I flashback and very quickly here just to look at the overall budget of the area, and the reality is that the amount of money being allocated to the library is only for those street improvements, and there are many other streets that are being improved in this almost $6 million. The majority of the money, you know, and $1 million to brownfields, which will improve the Empire area by allowing sites to be redeveloped within the area. So, none of these have library per se, and it is not the intent that the urban renewal area will pay for the moving of the library, the construction of the new facility, only for some of those street improvements that will help reduce some of the costs that would be required of the library when they move. So, i- in terms of the question of allocation of funds, the majority of funds are allocated towards improving that Empire District. And yes, I agree with you, Carolyn, if they could make the first part of the motion, because that is what the city council is looking to the planning commission for, and then get that finished, and then if they want to provide further information or input to the city council on any part of it, I, I think the city council would be very willing to hear that. But it would be great to do the first motion and get that completed.
I, I would like to just wear this library thing out one more time. Where in this thing does it describe that the library is gonna be moved? But where, I mean, we're saying that...
The, the council decided that a few months ago.
They did.
Yeah. It's council.
Paul Street.
Council did it. City council.
Yeah. I can't, I can't imagine why they would do such a thing, but I didn't know that. No, I thought that that had been decided, that, you know, that was a, they were, at one time, they had another idea for a site out that they chose not to go to.
True.
And I thought that was the end of it.
Nope. That's, so they, after that, they moved it to the, the park.
That's the, that's the land that they flipped on Ocean Boulevard.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm just getting educated then. Sorry about having to do that now, but, um, thank you. So, this is just about that, so I guess, yeah.
Right. I, it probably would be appropriate to go to the city council with your concerns at a later point in time and allow this thing to move forward. So, having said that, I'd like to make a motion that I moved that the Kooz Bay Planning Commission finds, based upon the information provided in the staff report and the provided attachments, that the Empire Urban Renewal Plan substantial amendment conforms with the Kooz Bay Comprehensive Plan.
Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, roll call?
Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner Marano.
Aye.
Commissioner Burr.
Abstain.
Jeremiah N. Gary.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens.
Nay.
Commissioner Miller.
Nay.
Would you guys like to follow up with the second motion, bracketing your concerns for the council?
Let's go to the meeting.
Carolyn, did you have anything else to say on this one?
No, I did not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, now we'll move to the public hearing for the item A, the Architectural Design Review Application 18721000043, having to do with the museum signage, or museum, yeah, signs on the highway.
I will first read the hearing disclosure statement. The review criteria for the Waterfront Heritage District is found at Kooz Bay Municipal Code Chapter 17.240 and was included in the staff report and notice. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the applicable criteria or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation which a person believes is applicable to the decision. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the decision-makers and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal on that issue. The Kooz History Museum is proposing to install custom vinyl, two-foot-by-four-foot pole-mounted banners to advertise exhibits and events that are scheduled for the, at the museum. So, we, we ask that they go through this process, even though technically what the, the banners aren't technically signage because they're not advertised...
aren't technically signage because they're not advertising a business. But we wanted the planning commission's input on those. There will be a significant number of them. It looks like three, six, nine, 10 or so, 11 maybe, throughout the site. They're small enough that they don't stick out too much, but they are visible from the highway as an attraction device for possible visitors to the community. So the review criteria that we looked for, for this, was in the goals and standards for signs. Again, technically, they're not signs. But we did find that even though they weren't technically signs, they are in keeping with the design standards and goals for signage in that district. There will occasionally, as they develop more banners, have some brightly colored ones, which are just temporary, and the standard ones that they propose are the black, white, grays, blues, the muted colors that are typical and approved in that district. And so staff recommends that we approve it as submitted.
Is there anyone here to speak in proponent testimony? Did the planning commission have any discussion over this?
Oh, I had a question. The black dots on this sheet are where the banners are going to go?
Those are where the current light poles are, and that's where the banners will be mounted, is on the current parking lot poles and the open plaza poles. Light poles.
So the format of each one of these signs fits with the, within the historic design that particular zone for signing.
Yeah.
And color palette.
These poles already exist in the light poles?
Light poles, yeah.
They're parking light poles.
Security.
They're invisible.
Yeah.
Well, I, I guess my concern is one of them sits right in the middle of my stump, and I don't want anything in on my stump.
They're stumped.
Yeah. If you haven't seen the stump at the museum, you need to go see it. She's a seven-and-a-half-ton stump that was pulled off the island and brought over there and set for the museum. I, I do not, I haven't been there in the last two weeks, but I do not remember a light pole in that planting area.
Some of these might be proposed future light poles as they develop them. They just gave a site plan of where they either exist or plan to exist.
Well, if it's already been moved clear across the bay, I'm sure we can move a few feet for a light pole.
We don't, well, we don't want to be stumped by this problem.
It says they will be above the stump there. Oh, it just went away.
Good luck moving it.
Says it's going to be hung, hung above the stump.
All right. That's a finished parking lot. I can't imagine them cutting that up to put light poles in, but maybe so. I haven't been, I haven't been there in two weeks.
Looks like they're already in place, is what the comments said. I'm not sure where those comments are coming from, but-
I will go see them.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, can we get a motion?
I guess I'd make a motion that we let them put in banners on light poles.
I'll second it.
All in favor, roll call?
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Marano?
Aye.
Commissioner Burr?
Aye.
Chairman Gary?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
All right. There is a 15-day appeal period from the date the decision's put in writing, which will be this week.
Perfect. And those comments were coming from Marcia Harts, so that was the Kooz-
Oh, okay. Well, hey, if Marcia's good with it, then I'm good with it.
Okay.
She's all right.
Item B, type III Development and Conditional Use Application. Does she want to do a staff report? It's Salvation Army rebuilding of the gym.
Alrighty. I will read the hearing disclosure statement. The review criteria for conditional use is found at Kooz Bay Municipal Code, Chapter 17.240, which was included in the staff report and notice. Testimony and evidence, which was directed towards the applicable criteria and other criteria in the plan or land use regulation which a person believes is applicable to the decision. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the decision makers and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal on that issue. The applicant, which is the Salvation Army, is proposing to replace the previously demoed gymnasium, which is 5,022 square feet. And they want to do it in the same footprints as the previous location. And the, because the demolition was done some time ago, not at the time of development, a new conditional use permit was required. And so we staff reviewed, as shown in the staff report, that the applicant has complied with the conditional use provisions of the Kooz Bay Municipal Code. And we recommended approval, subject to the listed conditions, which include that they take out the proper permits, which they have already applied for.
Is there any proponent testimony?
Um, sorry.
No, it's okay. Go ahead.
My name is Rebecca Kerr, and I am the architect for the Salvation Army. And I was trying to share my screen, but I don't know that that's going to work. So we just had some graphics of what the new gym is going to look like. Very, very similar to the old gym. Same size, same location, no major changes to any of the utilities or the parking. The only difference we've made in the gym is to change the way the stormwater directs off the top of the gym so that it no longer drains onto the existing building. That is the extent of the changes from the last facility to this facility. And I am sorry I can't share pretty pictures with you, but-
The planning commission did receive some elevation drawings in their packet.
Okay. But these were colored.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. So if anybody had any questions about it, we're happy to talk about it.
You are welcome to submit the color drawings for the, for the record if you'd like.
It's, it's all good.
Okay.
Any commissioner comments?
Looks good to me.
Looks good to me, too.
Yeah, we need it, need it, Jim.
We do need it. How about you guys? Did you have anything?
No, putting the whole one back in place, that sounds like a great idea.
Yes, yes. How about a motion, then?
I'll make the motion. We approve as presented.
I'll second it.
Roll call?
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Marano?
Aye.
Commissioner Burr?
Aye.
Chairman Gary?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
There is a 15-day appeal period from the date the decision's put in writing, which again, will be this week.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any public comment? No? How about commissioner comments?
Sorry I was late. My computer wouldn't let me join the team, so I-
We'd rather you in person.
Jumped in my car and got in here. It's a good thing I'm not too far away.
Well, thanks for coming down. Any staff comments? Or future matters of discussion?
Welcome, Mr. Terry.
Yeah, you're welcome, Mr. Marano. All right. Meeting adjourned?
Can you see any, can you see any difference between number two and number three, except this line of Shawn?